Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March 2018 Austin Peay State University Board Meeting, Board of Trustees meeting. Thanks to all of our guests for being here today. And at this time, we'd like to call a roll. So Secretary, please do that.
Trustee Atkins.
Here.
Trustee Canada.
Here.
Trustee Carroll.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Luck.
Here.
Trustee May.
Here.
Trustee Mueller.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley.
Here.
Trustee Rayburn.
Here.
Trustee Willenius.
Here.
So we have a quorum. Thank you. Please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. Before I call for a vote, are there any items that you wish to be extracted from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I move for adoption of the agenda, including the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
A second.
Let's see. So Don, is that you? Trustee Jenkins has seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the December 1st, 2017 Board Meeting were circulated in advance of the meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If none, do we have an emotion to approve those minutes? Moved by Trustee Atkins, seconded by Trustee Rayburn. Is that right? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to recognize President White, who will introduce individuals from our Athletic Department to provide us with a campus spotlight. And that's certainly a spotlight this year so far.
I am really privileged and excited that we have a lot of coaches and students here today who represent us on the court, on the field, all over the country. Last time I did this, I talked about all of the venues that you play, the golf courses and everything else. I won't go through that. But you all know how important athletics is to the student experience here. And you all support us, you attend our events. I'm really pleased with the support that we have from the trustees. But this year really is a year to celebrate. And I've asked AD, Ryan Ivey, to introduce his team. Not everyone could be here at spring break, but this has been such an exceptional year that I ask him to bring the coaches who were here and some of the students to tell you about the great things that are going on in the Department of Athletics. Ryan?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much, and thank you all for the opportunity to be here. We talk a lot in athletics about, really about family and how it's really critically important for us internally to make sure that we are supporting one another. And I think that extends to you guys as well, being a part of that family. And the fact that I see many of you around athletic events, that you get to know some of our student athletes, is really, really important to them. It's important to us, and it's certainly important to the mission of our Athletics Department. So I want to thank you guys for everything that you've done from that standpoint moving forward. We talk in athletics, and I'm going to be really brief. We talk in athletics about our vision. And our vision is to become the premier athletics department in the Ohio Valley Conference and a leader in all that we do. And we talk about academics, athletics, and administration. And it is critically important for us that when other folks within the Ohio Valley Conference look at Austin Peay Athletics, that they point to them and say, what are they doing? How can we be like them? And those are the things that we're trying to do on a regular basis. And so I had a list of things beforehand that I was going to show you, and all kinds of stats and all kinds of stuff. And then after going through that, realized probably the most important thing that I could do is bring up the people that are out there the most. And so what I want to do today, I've got some individuals here that I certainly want to introduce, but I'm going to have some of them speak to you as well. And I think what you'll get is the meaning behind athletics. And at the end of the day, I'm smart enough to understand that at the end of the day, the public is going to put up the wins and loss column, and they're going to judge us by that. And we all understand that. But why we do what we do in athletics is more important than what we do. And why we do, and you're going to see that today with our student athletes and our coaches. So I'm going to ask at this time, Taylor Mott and Ashley Slay from our volleyball program to come up. And while they're coming up, I want to introduce some of our other coaches that are here. If you guys will stand up when I call your names. So Rodney DeLonge is our new softball coach. Rodney came to us from Georgia Tech. And so Rodney's had a strong career of being a softball coach and is already doing really good things for our softball program. We have David Midlick, who is our head women's basketball coach here as well. And Coach Midlick just finished his third season here at Austin Peay. And then Naomi Karlova is our brand-new soccer coach. So she's the newest one on the block here, and she's learning. And Naomi comes to us from Tennessee Wesleyan, where she had a stellar career as a head coach there. Actually got the head coaching job when she was 24 over there. So she has been a head coach for 12 years, but got the head coaching job there when she was 24. So certainly glad to have them here. So I want to introduce, so you're going to have some individuals speak to you today. What I did was actually have the Coaches of the Year speak with you. And so we're going to have Coach Mott and Ashley go first. So guys, take it away.
Good morning. Is this on? Can you hear me? Thank you for having us. I can't tell you enough what it means to us to be included in what you all are doing. For a long time, I felt like athletics was kind of separate on this campus and not really included in the whole campus. But it's been, over the past couple of years and with President White, it's been amazing to see how much you all involve us and you come to our matches. Like you said, I see Mr. Atkins at our matches a lot, and President White. It's amazing. I hope you understand how great it is when you're at our matches and what it means to the girls. We had a great season. I'm going to keep it short. It started out, we had a big win against Missouri, and I think it kind of propelled us through the season. So we ended up winning the regular season. We ended up winning the conference tournament, which hasn't been done. I don't think no team has won the regular season and the conference tournament, so that was big for us. But really, the most important thing, Ryan drives home the message of supporting us. And when we would look in the stands and see football there and basketball and baseball was there a lot, it was really a cool feeling. I mean, that's why we do what we do. You know, these girls work hard, we train hard, and it's all about support. I mean, that's really what you're playing for. So when we got to see everyone in the stands and out there supporting us, it was amazing. We did end up going out to UCLA for the first round of the NCAA Tournament. It was an eye-opener, to say the least. It's hard to explain what 6'3" and 6'4" across the board looks like, but now we know. But it was an unbelievable experience. And to have the support of Austin Peay and everyone behind us made it really worthwhile. And like Ryan says, he wants these athletes to leave here with a diploma in one hand and a ring in the other. Well, you know. Luckily. But really, I'm going to let Ashley speak to you. She's been kind of the heart and soul of this program. She's a nut. If you ever come to any of the matches, you definitely know who she is. But I'm going to let her sum up her experience here and what this has meant to her.
Yes. Hello. I'm going to maybe move this. Yeah. I didn't think it'd move. Hello. Like she said, my name is Ashley Slay. And again, thank you for inviting us here today and giving me the mic. Very bold, but I will try to keep it short. So I think, I'm just going to kind of like, when I was walking in, I was trying to think of a word to summarize my Austin Peay experience here. And the word I came up with was growth. And not only like personal individual growth, but also growth as a program. When I got here, my freshman year, we were like good, made it to the conference tournament, but we kind of lost the first round to Belmont. And then sophomore year, we went through a challenge, to say the least. And then literally every year after that, we've been growing. And of course, this year, we reached our goal. But of course, the ring is always going to stay with me, and that's so important. But I think the thing I got most out of it is just the growth I've had as an individual. Coach knows, me freshman year was tough. It was a tough road. I was a bit crazy. You think I'm crazy now, you should have seen me then. And just like through Coach being so patient with me and the changes, even like with the assistant coach, Brian leaving my junior year, all those things together just made us all stronger as a team, especially the senior class that I got to come in with. We had changes in that. But I think one thing that was just consistent was like the family aspect that you were kind of talking about. Just through us all going through those things together, they kind of just make you stronger and more of like a unit, you know? Families go through things. And we had our share of that at the volleyball program, but it all totally pays off, just being able to say, we won the, like, won the conference and we got a ring. And just like some of my bridesmaids at my wedding are some of my teammates, you know, like a big chunk of them. So that's like, if you look at other programs, especially like the higher D1 ones that are just like strictly all about volleyball, they are missing like, I think, that family aspect. And so it's a complete privilege coming to Austin Peay and being able to leave like with the family, you know? And I'm just super grateful for that experience. So thank you.
So I can assure you, that is a tame version of Ashley Slay. So if you haven't had the opportunity to come and see the real version of Ashley Slay, you're missing out. But Ashley was the Conference Player of the Year, and obviously Coach Mott was the Coach of the Year. So very, very, very well done and very great representatives of Austin Peay State University. Next up, I'm going to have Coach Matt Figure and Zach Galata come up. So if you guys will come up. So as they're coming up, obviously Coach Figure had the daunting task of replacing a legend in Coach Dave Luce. And as I was going through the search process to look for our new head men's basketball coach, I needed someone who had the emotional intelligence enough about themselves to know that they were following a legend. And to know that there are some things that you're going to have to embrace about following a legend, but at the same time, be strong enough to run your own program. And I think that was the critical aspect when we were going through that search process was not just how good of a basketball coach was he, but could he handle that aspect of it? And I think Coach Figure has done a marvelous job at that. So I'll introduce Coach Matt Figure and Zach Galata.
Good morning, everyone. You know, the one thing I think that is very important about APSU is what we're doing in our Athletic Department. I don't think enough can be said for the job that Ryan has done. You know, obviously, I tricked someone into giving me a trophy. But, you know, the job that Will Healy's done is incredible. The job that Taylor has done is incredible. I mean, I'm around a lot of good coaches. You guys get a lot of bang for your buck, so to speak. And the one thing that's more impressive to me about being here is the student athletes. You know, I lay my head down every night knowing that I've got a great group of kids. We may be just average players, but we got a great, great group of kids. And I never worry about any of them getting in trouble. I've been doing this profession for 25 years. I've been at, you know, six different institutions, at least. And there's people on your team at times, if you go to bed, you're just waiting for the phone call. I mean, you know, and here with my team, we don't have it. And the one thing that's, I think, is as just impressive is that if you look at football, you look at basketball, baseball, you go across the board. I don't think, I think every coach will tell you that they don't have to worry about their kids. You don't have to worry about them because they're not getting in trouble. That's the type of character that we have here at this university. And the proof is in the pudding when you look at this. Our team had over a 3.2 team GPA this year. Our entire department had over a 3.0. I mean, that's being the ultimate student athlete. And so I'm really privileged to be working with the people I work with. You know, there's a lot of things that's got to improve with the facilities and things like that, and that's another discussion. But right now, you guys, and I see everybody here at our events and everything, just like Taylor said, but we have unbelievable coaches. And we have an unbelievable guy who is in charge and has an unbelievable vision. And I think you guys are sitting on a goldmine here with just the coaches and the athletic director. So with that being said, I'll let Zach talk a little bit.
Thank you. Good morning. To share a little bit of my experience here, it's been interesting. I spent two years under Coach Luce, who, you know, as Ryan introduced, was a legend here. And then this past year, I've played for Coach Fig. And, you know, we're still completing this season in hopes of, you know, winning the CIT Championship. But I think as Ryan said on, and, you know, Ashley and Coach Mott and Coach Figure hit on, the student athletes here, myself, and just everyone I come into contact is a big family. And you see that in coming to the games. You notice the majority of the students at each other's games are student athletes. The majority of the student section at our games, at the volleyball games, they're all student athletes. And I think that's one of the great things we've built here is a family and a culture of support and just being there for one another. The culture and the vision here that Ryan, you know, has set has been great. It's been a great experience for me. I know, you know, I have an older brother that plays, you know, Division One basketball as well. And, you know, things he, you know, tells me about is about, you know, their stuff. Most of the time, you see that sports are divided, and that's not the case here. You know, on the basketball team, you know, we're one family because we're close. We spend, you know, every day and every moment together. But we have extended family through all the other sports. You know, some of my really good friends here are, you know, on the, you know, football team, baseball team, you know, and other sports here. So I think that, you know, what we've done here is really special. I know I can see that in just the relationships I've built here. And I think life is all about relationships, and I've built some of the best relationships I've ever had in my life here in Austin Peay with the student athletes.
Thank you, guys. So Zach talked about relationships and talked about family. In fact, he is getting ready to start his own family with Ashley. He and Ashley are getting married, and they're engaged to be married. So we're excited about what's going on there. So those two are wonderful examples of really what we're trying to build from a student-athlete standpoint. So we wish them all the best in their upcoming marriage. The next two we got, we've got Coach Healy and Javon Craig coming up. And obviously, you guys know about our football program and the things that have been going on there. And the fact that we've took a football program this past year that had a 29-game losing streak and won eight games was really phenomenal. And I think, again, when we went through the hiring process to find a new head football coach, we needed someone with vision, we needed someone with energy, and we needed someone who was just naive enough to think that he could turn this program around. And I can tell you that we got all that and more with Will Healy. So we'll let Will and Javon take it away.
Good morning, everybody. I think, I'll share this with you real quick. Number one, what makes me sleep easy at night is knowing that I don't feel like there's anybody in FCS football that can give student athletes a better experience than what Austin Peay can. And I think that they feel like what they do is important. They're proud to wear Austin Peay gear around, which was important to me whenever I took the job. And I think, I want to thank all of you for, and especially President White and Ryan, for allowing me to treat these guys the way that they deserve to be treated, which is, you know, my goal when somebody signs at Austin Peay is that they had the same decision to make five years down the road, whenever they left, that they would pick Austin Peay again. And that's the whole student-athlete experience for me, you know, not just what they're doing on the football field, but what's it like in the classroom? What's the support of their professors? What's their relationship like with the professors? Do they think the administration supports them? So I feel great about the student-athlete experience here. Obviously, winning helps that. I'm not naive. I understand that, you know, that's a huge part of the equation, and that helps us recruit better student-athletes. But I think we were doing that before we got to eight and four and ranked in the top 25 in the country, and just want to say thanks to all of you. Unbelievably rewarding year for me. You know, we had six fifth-year seniors that had never played in a college football game that they had won. And so you go from, let's tear down the goalpost after winning one, to winning eight out of nine in FCS football. And the expectations changed pretty quick. And that's what I wanted. I wanted a football team with expectations, and I think we're finally to that point. I'm telling them, we expect to win a national championship now. That's the next step in mind. And, you know, it was a laughable goal when the season started for a lot of people. Now it's realistic. And I think that's, you've allowed us to have that type of experience here. So I agree with Matt. I think that when we got here, I think all of our goal was to change an athletic department, which then I think can help change the perception of a university. And Ryan's been unbelievable. He's given us everything we need. I can't, there was not another athletic director in the country who would have ever hired a 30-year-old passing game coordinator at Chattanooga. So I'm lucky that these two are making the decision. But I think that with what these kids have been able to go through with the success that's coming, there's no place that they would rather be. And our expectations are extremely high. We're in spring practice right now. We're eight out of 15 practices. I think we're more talented than we've been, and we're able to attract unbelievable student-athletes here because it's a great university, it's got great support, the community's embraced it, and now we're winning football games. That's a little bit easier to sell than it was a year ago. So appreciate y'all. I'll let Javon Craig. Javon's a quarterback from Chattanooga, Tennessee, has started 10 games here, actually started the first game to break the losing streak at 29 games. I had recruited him for a long time, and he's done some exceptional things. So I'll let Javon talk now.
Good morning. Thank you for having me here and inviting us here to be able to speak and share with you guys about my experience and our experience as athletes and coaches. Crazy story, when I first got an offer from Austin Peay, Coach Cannon was the head coach. And I told my mom about it, I was super excited, and they're like, there's no way you're going to Austin Peay. So of course, the history of Austin Peay football was bad, and it was just, being here has been a true blessing to me. I know me and Coach Healy have had plenty of conversations where he's like, I remember where you wouldn't even answer the phone for me, with me being recruited by programs like Louisville and Mississippi State and just major D1 schools. And growing up, like, my whole dream was to be an SEC football player or ACC football player. And I never imagined being at a school like Austin Peay. But I can say that coming here was the best decision of my life, and I wouldn't have made a different decision. I do not regret this decision at all. And of course, being an athlete, you always put your tools into like winning and having great seasons and winning championships, and those things are great. But as Ashley and Zach mentioned about the whole family aspect, there's so much more to being a student-athlete, which some people don't see. And through my experience as being a college athlete for two years, Ashley and Zach are like my best friends, and we get the chance to serve at Life Point Church on Wednesday nights and on Sundays with our student ministry. And I think that the most rewarding thing for me is being able to go to Life Point Church on Wednesday and being able to be around middle school and high school kids who say, hey, I want to come to Austin Peay because of you, or I want to do this because of you. The community that we're surrounded by and supported by is so great, and I can't like be thankful enough for that. It's taught me how to value family, it's taught me how to value what I'm doing on a daily basis, whether it's academics or sports or how I work, and just my reputation as a student-athlete, understanding that I'm not just here to play sports, but I'm representing the community in the city as well, and people are always watching you. So my experience has been amazing, and nothing short of that. And just being able to have an impact on the community the way that we have had, not just only football, but with all the other sports, has been really good. One of my probably favorite moments, and I guess the tornado relief that we did this past week was like so great, and just being able to go through the community and helping people in need and just seeing that, you know, you are a light to the community and that your impact is great and people need it. So just being able to shine a light on Clarksville as being a student-athlete has been my favorite part of being here.
So I think you guys heard, I mean, three great examples of the things that we're trying to build. And so I'm just going to quickly go through some slides here to kind of put a capstone to all that. But again, our core values, things that we talk about on a regular basis, you know, we've got five of them, and really, it makes up our tribe and what it means to be a part of our tribe. And we have an acronym through those core values from that aspect of it. And we won't let anybody in our tribe that doesn't conform to what we're trying to do and is not going to be part of what we're doing from a family atmosphere. And it all leads to our culture, and they talked about that. And the be a GOV, be a champion, while it's a catchy slogan and a catchy marketing gimmick, if you will, it's not that. I mean, it's something that is much more to us and what it takes to be a GOV and to be a champion, not just on the court or on the competition surface, but in life. And that's what we're doing with our student-athletes, is we're trying to teach them and help them to really become champions in life. And some of the academic highlights that they mentioned, excuse me, we had, last fall, we had, our student athletes had a 3.1 GPA. It's the highest ever GPA, departmental GPA that we've had for one semester. And our goal every semester is to have a 3.0 or higher GPA. And so when we talk about what it means to be a student-athlete, our student-athletes are living that, and it's really, really important. And then when we talk about our community involvement, and I challenged them, I challenged them every year, I want 4,000 hours of community service. And they're out in the community, letting the community know them and really get to know them. And one of the things that we try to do is certainly partner with Fort Campbell and serve those who serve us. And it's been really rewarding to see our relationship with Fort Campbell from an Athletics Department grow because of the work that our student-athletes have done, because of the work that our coaches have done. We played a basketball game on post this past November. It's the first ever collegiate basketball game that's ever been played at Fort Campbell. And it was really important and something that we're already planning for the next one moving forward. And again, that's part of our culture and the things that we're trying to do on a daily basis. And I just wanted to kind of end with this aspect of it, just so that you could see some of the things that we've done. And when we talk about our student-athlete experience, it encompasses many things, but facilities is part of it. And those are the things that we're starting to focus on now, what we're trying to do moving forward. We just opened our new weight room there, Forterra Stadium, this past March. It services all of our student-athletes. It's been an incredible tool for us. I think Coach L and his staff have done a really phenomenal job of utilizing that facility and getting our student-athletes into a premier shape, if you will, so that they can compete at a high level. And so we're going to continue to focus on that. We also just opened up our new beach volleyball courts that you see right in front of the Dunn Center. And this is our second season for beach volleyball here at Austin Peay. And I think Coach Mott would tell you, it was a huge, it had a huge impact on our indoor team last year. And the reason why they were able to really, to compete at a high level and win championships is because they were able to play beach in the spring. And I think that certainly had a lot to do with it. And then obviously, you guys have seen what we did there at football with our mobile suites. And we've actually moved three of those to baseball as well. So this has been a great revenue generating tool for us and what we're trying to do there. And it's really enhanced our fan experience. And so I think those things are critically important to the things that we're doing moving forward. And facilities are the next part for us. We have to do some things to help with our facility enhancements, some of the things that we're trying to work on with baseball and multipurpose facility, auxiliary gyms, those type of things. And we're going to start doing those things really in conjunction with the university's comprehensive campaign. But the future is extremely bright, and I'll end with this slide. And the fact that Coach Healy could pick me up is really phenomenal, feeding itself. But it is a great day to be a GOV, and we talk about that a lot. And every day is a great day to be here. And I think sometimes college athletics gets a bad rap. And I think you see some of the news and some of the stuff that goes on in college athletics and really at the highest level. And at the end of the day, it is more important to us to have great people. And it's more important to us to make sure that we're teaching our young people how to be great productive people, whether it be better husbands, better fathers, better spouses, you know, productive people of society so that when they're doing great things, you guys as a board, we as administration can point to them and say, they're one of ours. They're one of ours. And that's what it means to be a GOV, and that's what it means to be a GOV and be a champion. So again, thank you guys so much for the opportunity to be here. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much for your support. Thank you guys for coming and being here. But happy to take any questions that you guys may have at this point.
I'm really incredibly proud of our student-athletes.
Too much success to ask questions.
Well, there is a lot of success. I'm really proud of Ryan, but I wanted to say how much, the students know, you know I love you. I love you. I'm crazy about you. But I also deeply respect you, your professionalism, your attitude, your work ethic. You are amazing individuals, and we will always be proud of you. I'm very proud of the coaches. individuals and we will always be proud of you. I'm very proud of the coaches. But I wanted to make one thing clear. I'm, I make one hire. I'm not, I'm not a micromanager. I'm not good enough to micromanage and wouldn't the athletics program. Ryan is a fabulous A.D. And so I'm really proud of you, Ryan, and the attitude that you have every day and you have our support. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Well, I'll just add a couple of thoughts as well. Most of us on the board have been through a lot of, I guess, thick and thin with the Austin P. Athletics programs. A lot of good success in, in the past years. We're, we're known as a, as a strong university and a competitive university in the OVC for sure. I'll tell you what, I, I can't express enough, as, as Dr. White said, the pride that this, I think I speak for the group and I'll, I'll certainly open up their microphones if they wish to say something too. You guys just are a first-class group of individuals. The students, you guys are super impressive. And we all share the pride in what you've accomplished and we understand the hard work and certainly the success that you guys represent. So thank you for what you do in representing this university so well. And I'll open it up to anybody else that has any thoughts before we move on. Don?
Well, some of us have been watching Austin P. Athletics before you coaches were born. Hate to admit that. But any rate, I, I remember Austin P. Athletics back in the 60s. That was only thing to do in Clarksville, Tennessee back then was Austin P. Athletics. And it was really an exciting time and, and we always look forward to every basketball, every football, baseball game. And I can, I'd like to compliment Dr. White. I met her three weeks after she came to Austin P. And she said something that will stick with me forever. She said, athletics is the front porch of this university. And that is a belief that athletics is going to reestablish our position at Austin P. There's so much excitement here right now. It is absolutely incredible. Ryan Ivy, you've just done a phenomenal job picking incredible coaches and the, the, the quality of our staff now is just unbelievable. And, and I'll say that not only for the coaches, but for Austin P. In its entirety. Dr. White has been a breath of fresh air. Let's, let's give her a hand.
Would you share that with Elliot?
I'd like to just say that I started off as a student athlete. I've got a daughter that's on a track scholarship. She's a student athlete. The family atmosphere that you have is so huge because most of you don't have family here. And I try to support as many of her meets as I can because not all parents can travel to these meets, not all parents can be. And it's totally different on the collegiate level. And you're trying to take care of laundry and feed yourself and study. And people who aren't involved in that type of curricular activity and that type of time management, it's, it's a hard thing to understand. So I like to commend, you know, the whole department with the, with the grade point average. That's, that's huge. And that's something to really be proud of. And you guys keep striving for it.
I have something to add. So I just wanted to say from the non-student athlete perspective, you guys are an inspiration to all of us on campus. And your camaraderie and like your relationships with each other are really inspiring to us. And so, I mean, it's awesome being there in the stands and cheering you guys on. So we just appreciate you guys and we love you. So thank you.
Thank you all very much for being here. We appreciate it a lot. Thanks for the update. And I think I would add that I agree with what, what Coach Figger said, that we do have a gold mine in terms of the coaches that we have here and certainly the athletes as well. So thank you all very much. We ready to move on? I'd now like to recognize Trustee Jenkins, Chair of the Academic Policies and Programs, Student Life Committee, to give us a report on the committee meeting yesterday.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Academic Programs and Policies Student Life Board Committee Meeting. Committee reviewed the following information items. Provost Gandhi informed the committee of the Tennessee Higher Education Committee's recent approval of the Doctor of Educational Leadership Program and the next steps in the approval process. Provost Gandhi also provided an update on the status of the development of the proposed Doctor in Counseling Psychology Program. The program proposal is currently moving through the steps in the Tennessee Higher Education Committee Staff Review Process. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items, which you approved today by consent. Graduate Certificate in Teaching English to Speakers of Other Languages. The committee also reviewed the names of three students who were put forward as finalists to serve as the next student trustee. The committee selected Celeste Malone. The above item will be presented for your review and action after the approval of the Board Committee Minutes. That concludes my report and I move that the Board approve the minutes of the March 8th Academic Programs and Policies Student Life Board Committee as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Atkins has seconded the motion. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the minutes of the Academic Policies and Programs Student Life Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the minutes of the Academic Policies and Programs Student Life Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Trustee Jenkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Jenkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. You have before you the information regarding the three individuals who applied and were selected as finalists to serve as our next student trustee. After careful discussion and deliberation, the committee proposes the Board select Celeste Malone to serve in this position. By direction of the committee, I move that we select Celeste Malone to serve as our next student trustee. The student will serve a one-year term beginning on May 5, 2018. That's the day after commencement, running through 2018-19 academic year.
And because it is a motion of the committee, we do not need a second or any discussion. Hearing none. The question on the selection of the student trustee, Celeste Malone, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any vote? Thank you very much.
That concludes my report.
And now I'd like to recognize Trustee Canada, a member of the Audit Committee, to give us a report of the committee meeting yesterday.
We reviewed several action items yesterday and a few informational items yesterday. The action items we reviewed were that we approved the Internal Audit Charter. We approved the Internal Audit Policy and Reporting Fraud, Waste and Abuse Policy. We also approved the Fiscal Year 2017 Internal Audit Plan. The informational items we discussed were that we reviewed the Comptroller's Office Financial and Compliance Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2016. We reviewed the Quality Assurance Review for Periodic Internal Review Results from May 2016. We reviewed the Internal Audit Customer Satisfaction Survey Results for Fiscal Year 2017. The internal audit reports issued in Fiscal Year 2017, along with a list of outstanding audit recommendations. And we had a, we had an educational session as well. So do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the Audit Committee Meeting held?
So moved.
Second.
There be any discussion for the minutes? If not, those in favor vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Vote no.
Just to be sure.
I'll be quiet.
So Trustee Canada has presented her report. Is there a second to the motion that she has made?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded by Trustee Rayburn that we adopt the minutes of the Audit Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the minutes of the Audit Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Minutes are approved. Trustee Canada, are there any items for the full board to consider? No.
There are not.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Business and Finance Committee Meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items. Non-mandatory fee increases for the 2018-2019 academic year. B, housing rate increases for the 2018-2019 academic year. And C, campus property acquisition. These items will be presented for your review and action in a few minutes. The committee reviewed the following information items. The Governor of Tennessee Budget Recommendation. At the end of January, the governor helped to state of the state address where his budget was discussed for the next fiscal year. The budget will be approved by the legislature in the spring. Governor's budget was shared with the committee. Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Financial Report. Information from the financial report for fiscal year 2016-17 was shared with the committee. Additionally, the composite financial index was shared. The university's current composite financial index is 2.03, with one being kind of a watch benchmark and three being the top. And Austin P. Out of 2.03, and in the middle there. That concludes my report and I move that the Board approve the minutes from the March 8 Business and Finance Committee Meeting as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Atkins, seconded by Trustee May. It has been moved and seconded then that we adopt the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee Meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee Meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Trustee Atkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. The first action item for approval is you have before you a copy of the non-mandatory fee increases for the year 2018-2019 academic year. By the direction of the committee, I move to approve these mandatory fee increases as written, Mr. Chairman.
And because it is a motion of the committee, we don't need a second. You have heard the motion on the consideration of non-mandatory fees. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on the consideration of non-mandatory fees. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
Thank you very much. Trustee Atkins, I guess.
Yeah. You also have before you a copy of the housing rate increases for the year 2018-2019 academic year. By the direction of the committee, I move to approve the housing rate increases for the 2018-2019 academic year as written, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The, you've heard the motion on the consideration of housing rates for the 2018 and 19 academic year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The question on the consideration of housing rates for the 2018-19 academic year is on. Please call the roll, Ms. Secretary.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
All right. You also have before you the information for the campus property acquisition. By the direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the campus property acquisition.
Thank you. You've heard the motion on the, the property acquisition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The question on property acquisition is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
All right. You also have before you the information for the campus property acquisition. By the direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the campus property acquisition.
Thank you. You've heard the motion on the, the property acquisition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The question on property acquisition is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
Thank you very much. I'd now like to recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Business and Finance Committee Meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items. Non-mandatory fee increases for the 2018-2019 academic year. B, housing rate increases for the 2018-2019 academic year. And C, campus property acquisition. These items will be presented for your review and action in a few minutes. The committee reviewed the following information items. The Governor of Tennessee Budget Recommendation. At the end of January, the Governor helped to state of the state address where his budget was discussed for the next fiscal year. The budget will be approved by the legislature in the spring. Governor's budget was shared with the committee. Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Financial Report. Information from the financial report for fiscal year 2016-17 was shared with the committee. Additionally, the composite financial index was shared. The university's current composite financial index is 2.03, with one being kind of a watch benchmark and three being the top. And Austin P. Out of 2.03, and in the middle there. That concludes my report and I move that the Board approve the minutes from the March 8 Business and Finance Committee Meeting as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Atkins, seconded by Trustee May. It has been moved and seconded then that we adopt the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee Meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes. The first action item for approval is you have before you a copy of the non-mandatory fee increases for the year 2018-2019 academic year. By the direction of the committee, I move to approve these mandatory fee increases as written, Mr. Chairman.
And because it is a motion of the committee, we don't need a second. You have heard the motion on the consideration of non-mandatory fees. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on the consideration of non-mandatory fees. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
All right. You also have before you the information for the campus property acquisition. By the direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the campus property acquisition.
Thank you. You've heard the motion on the, the property acquisition. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. The question on property acquisition is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Canada?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mealer?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
None yeses.
Thank you very much. Trustee Atkins, I guess.
Yeah. You also have before you a copy of the housing rate increases for the year
This is a gift that has been given to us by Mark and Jerry Blick in honor of their son Brock, who recently died. Just a terrible tragedy in our community. And the Blicks approached us and their son, a very, very special kid. I remember seeing him when he used to come to his mom, with his mom to our baseball games and just an important part of the fabric of our community. And they, he was, he died in a hunting accident. But the son had a deep passion for agriculture and for cattle. And the ability to connect that family with the work that we're doing out at our farm was pretty amazing, and it's pretty emotional and very personal. And they want to take his legacy and remember their son and the work and the education that we're doing in our area of agricultural science. And so they have, they're wanting to name the animal facility out there, the Brock Blick Animal Society Facility, Science Facility. And they have pledged a gift of $250,000. And I can assure you that their continued gifting to the institution will continue. They have a deep passion for this and want the legacy of their son to be remembered. So we would like to request the naming of that facility after their son Brock. Would you like me to do all of them? Okay. The second, the second is the naming of the baseball field and softball stadium after Joe and Kathy Maynard. Joe and Kathy Maynard, Joe Maynard is the owner of Echo Power Engineering Company, a local power engineering company. And I'll tell you what, they're another very, very special story. They have approached and been, approached us very early in that opportunity for naming and donated, well, created a sponsorship opportunity that we named the club level at their stadium after their company, Echo Power. And it's called Echo Power Club, and part of that sponsorship was for $575,000. After we continue to develop the relationship with them and they became so deeply involved and they were very passionate through the course of the football season and now the basketball season, they love this university. And to see their interest and their engagement in all parts of our university is pretty significant because you have a gentleman and his wife that have grown a pretty significant and very successful company. And they're at the point that they want to give back. And they have identified Austin P. because of our passion for the military and our commitment to the military, that's a very important part of their connection to this university, but also because of the people at the university. President White and Ryan Ivey have done a phenomenal job in developing that relationship. And they're engaged and they want to be a part of the future success of Austin P. And that's, it's a very unique relationship. They're proposing, they have agreed to donate $1.5 million over 10 years for the naming of the baseball field, and then it's another $250,000 that's going to the softball stadium naming and for a combined gift of $1.5 million pledge today. We're very excited and honored to have people like this associated with our university. We're looking to name both those facilities in honor of this family. Finally, a former football player who, once again, another great supporter of the university, a young, a young individual from Texas who comes back frequently and like I said, has a, I'll tell you what, he was one of our alumnus of the year, young alumnus of the year award winners this last year. And he's continuing, as he continues to grow his business, is very excited about the prospects of continued involvement. And he's agreed to donate $25,000 over seven years to meet the requirement of a beach volleyball center court value and to be named after his family. You'll get to know Trent L., he'll be around, and he'll be an important part of the future of Austin P. now and into the indefinite future. So those are the three naming opportunities that we are requesting.
Thank you, Derek. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Vandermeer. We will take these as a group. Is there a motion to approve the naming of the animal science facility as the Brock Blick Animal Science Facility? The naming of the baseball field and softball stadium as the Joe and Kathy Maynard Baseball Field and the Joe and Kathy Maynard Softball Stadium? And the naming of the beach volleyball court as the Kathy Family Court?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Carroll, seconded by Trustee Jenkins. Is there any discussion? I would just say we're very thankful to have those families and their generous gifts, obviously, for, for the university. It's an awesome thing to do. Hearing no further discussion, the question on adopting the proposed namings of the facilities, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, I'd like to recognize President White to give her report and also to report on any interim items.
Thank you, Chairman. I invite you to look in your packet for President's interim items, review of contracts and agreements, and State Building Commission actions. I won't go over those separately, but you can take a look, and if you have any questions, we can answer any questions that you have over any item. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. It's been a fun day already. Anytime we can talk about success academically, athletically, success that deals with service, success in philanthropy, it's, it's pretty rewarding. And frankly, it's gratifying to talk about all the successes that are occurring at Austin P. We have a good story to tell. In fact, just like the athletes talk to students from other universities and our faculty talk to their colleagues at other universities, I also talk to leaders across the nation. And I really feel like we are in the best opportunity just about of any place I've ever been. It's just the time with the opportunities that present themselves. But we have some major challenges that are not just Austin P. challenges, but they're challenges that other universities in the state and around the nation are facing. And I wanted to talk to you about some of those challenges today. I was just thinking about the different tone I was going to take today because it just occurs to me, we have a lot of intellectual capital around the table. That's one thing I like about the university, when you have nearly 1,000 employees, many of whom have achieved top levels in their fields. We have a lot of intellectual capital at the university as well. But I would like to engage you as thought partners on some of these issues. And so let me put it with a little background and put it in some context. We're categorized nationally as a state college and university, a comprehensive state college and university. That's different from a flagship research-intensive university. It's different from a technological university. It means that teaching is our primary focus and that our faculty also conduct research important to advance their disciplines, but also to inform their teaching. But teaching never takes the backseat. It never is subordinate to any other function in, in the campus activities. And as much as I love athletics, we are most concerned that these students graduate and that they leave not just with that ring, but with that diploma. And so we provide social and economic mobility through accessibility to students of all socioeconomic backgrounds. We're known for relative affordability, and we really are a good investment for the student dollar, for the state's investment, and also the national investment. So Austin P. occupies a unique place in the portfolio of public universities in Tennessee. We welcomed our largest freshman class last year, or this year, actually, and then beat a record set last year for that largest freshman class. But we also serve a unique population. Nearly 40% of our students are non-traditional. One in four is military-connected, either active-duty, veteran, or dependent. And we believe the makeup of our student body provides a rich environment to learn and to work. Historically, Tennessee, like other states, funded about 70% of a student's education. And then the student's tuition paid for about 30% of that education. Over the last couple of decades or so, that calculation has flipped. And so now, the student tuition and other sources fund about 70% of a student's education, and the state provides about 30% of the education. Now Tennessee has increased funding for higher education when the economy has been good. But frankly, it's had to balance the needs of colleges and universities with other obligations such as K-12 schools, state pensions, and healthcare. And so when the economy has been poor, funding for higher ed has lagged, and when the economy has improved, we, even though the state's investing, we haven't been able to make up for those cuts and the lower appropriations and the downturns. Clearly, the burden on the student to pay tuition has increased. And let me say that Tennessee's actually in a better spot than many states in the nation. I know some states that pay less than 10% of a student's bill. And so when we, when we talk about disinvestment, it's not that the student, that the state has abandoned higher ed. We're really in better shape. It's just a reality of the economy that the nation, the nation has, has faced and the fact that many more people are going to school. So these universities are growing. So the burden on the student is significant, and Tennessee students get some tuition assistance through the state. We're fortunate that we have the Tennessee HOPE Scholarship, and nearly three-quarters of our students enter with that scholarship. They have to have a certain GPA or a certain SAT or ACT score to get it. About 67% of our students receive some form of financial aid. Only about a quarter of our students, though, graduate with no debt. And that's higher than many universities. There are some in the state where only about half graduate with debt. And that sometimes can be because it takes them longer to get through school because they're working. Many of our students work full-time or almost full-time, and it kind of goes back to that non-traditional family where they, they're raising children and they're working and they're, they're fitting in school as they can. The 75% of students who do graduate with debt, an average for both graduate and undergraduate students is, is just under $30,000. That's, that's about standard for national. It's lower for undergrad and higher for grad. So we've made a point to contain tuition and fees over the years. So to put it in context, 10 years ago, only three public Tennessee universities had tuition higher than Austin P.'s. So we were four out of nine. Now we have the second lowest tuition among public universities in the state. We are eight out of nine. We want to be in the lower to middle range because that's, that's the only way we can fulfill our mission for access. We have students who come here who would not have an option somewhere else. And so it's really important that we keep the gate open and give that opportunity to our students. But we have to be diligent also. We can't fail to invest and continue to invest in the academic mission. And so one of the ways we're doing that is through the faculty and staff in Academic Affairs who are proposing these new programs. And you know, we started the last, the first engineering program, our Engineering Physics Program, which is underway. We'll do it in the Doctor of, Doctor of Education pending SAC COC approval. That'll start in the fall. The Aviation Program will also begin soon. And so these are examples of a university working with regional partners to identify and address workforce needs and the opportunities we should offer students. But that means even when revenues are declining, we have to continue to find ways to reallocate and invest in new opportunities, or we're, we're behind. So I want to mention three challenges specifically that we're facing that we must overcome. And one is insufficient funding. Our major cost drivers are salaries and benefits. Salaries account for a little more than half of the operating budget, while benefits associated with those salaries are 21%. So you can think that 72% of our operating budget is tied up with salaries and benefits. Now that doesn't include the separate capital allocations recommended by T.HAC and the governor and appropriated by the legislature. It also doesn't include revenue that we get from grants and contracts or the financial aid that passes through. So if, when you're looking at our budget, and Mitch Robinson, Vice President for Finance, Business and Finance, can explain if you want a more detailed look at this, but we have an operating budget, and then we have a lot, we have a different budget that has a lot more money coming through it, but a lot of it's passed through. So when we talk about financial aid that comes through the university directly to the student, and so we're not including that here. But we don't have a lot of flexibility when 72% of our operating budget is in salaries. And although the biggest cost driver is salaries, we're lean. So I've told you before that Austin P. has the lowest number of faculty members per FTE student in the, in the LGI, among the LGI institutions. And, and I suspect it's the same if we look at UT. I just had LGI data. LGI stands for locally governed institutions, so those that are having their own operating boards like, like you. We have the lowest number of professional staff members per FTE student. We have the lowest number of administrators per FTE student. We have the second lowest number of clerical, IT, and support staff members per FTE student among locally governed institutions. We are struggling in some places to keep up with this. And I've told you this before, but I want you to kind of see how remarkable it is to have the achievement that we have, given the fact that our folks really are having to push, push, push for the achievement and the success that they're having in their areas. We are too lean. We are too lean. We've been putting most of our resources the last couple of years into increasing the salaries of our employees who were below market. After we stabilize those salaries, we'll need to engrow, to grow our employee base strategically to better support our efforts and to avoid burning out the great people who make this place run. And I've shared some of that with you before, but I wanted you to understand that as we will be talking about our budget later, we'll talk about tuition later, we'll be talking about all the things that we can do to increase revenue, we are very good stewards with the universities and the state's resources. The second major challenge for discussion today is the condition some students find themselves in when they're on their own for the first time. And this is something that really does keep me up. I started here the end of June 2014. I drove from Texas by myself. My car was full. Elliot couldn't move at the time, and it was about a 10 and a half hour drive. Carol Clark and her husband Steve met me along with Lieutenant Williams to, to get me into Archwood. And I got into the house, called my dad, and my stepmother said, "Make them check the basement, make them check the basement." She was just afraid somebody was waiting for me, which was really funny. But I, I went to bed that night, and, and I tell this story often, I've told it to you, but I can't even describe the burden that hit me when I had my first night here as President of Austin P. And I feel so responsible for every student, every faculty member, every staff member. We are succeeding in a lot of areas, but we have failures too, and we have accidents. And every single one of them rests at my door. And so what hurts and, and keeps me up is when we have students who are ill, students who are struggling. More students are coming with mental health issues or on medications that they're struggling to manage on their own, and they often need assistance. In 2014, so that, you know, I came here the end of June, that first fall, our Boyd Health Clinic had a 40% increase in mental health calls, 40% in one semester, and it has not gone down. So I asked Dr. Rutter, who was over that division under Vice President for Student Affairs, Shel Berg, I asked him to get me updated figures last week, thinking, well, maybe it stabilized, maybe it had, it had gone down. Last fall, this past fall, 59 students presented as crisis walk-ins with suicidal ideation or other concerns so severe they required immediate attention. 14 students out of a 15-week semester, so we're talking on average one a week, were hospitalized in response to life-threatening suicidal behavior. Statewide, there's a documented severe shortage of mental health providers. That's why I'm very excited about our CID proposal. There aren't enough. Tennessee has only met 14% of its need for mental health providers. Just before Christmas, our neighboring state-funded community mental health clinic, which is on our property on 8th Street, stopped accepting referrals of new psychiatric patients. So we have fewer places to send our students who are in crisis. Boyd Health Services saw a number of visits for mental health concerns increase. I remember in the fall of 2014, we had a 40% increase. This last fall, from 2016 to 2017, we had another 44% increase. Went from 243 students to 350 students. Clearly, something has to be done. And it's something that, that does worry me and it concerns me. So we're balancing access with students who are clearly able mentally, well, you know, they're able academically to succeed, but what's going on in their lives that we need to help them with and, and help support them to get through school? And frankly, we've had some students who come here to go to school, and we accept them, and we have to accept them based on their scores, and their parents tell them not to come home. So if they don't succeed here, there's no place for them to go. The final challenge I want to present today is not only a challenge, but it's an opportunity and it's a privilege. We pride ourselves on offering support to our military-connected students and their families sufficient to allow them to complete a degree. That is an honor. But not only do those students now have to deal with multiple deployments... But not only do those students now have to deal with multiple deployments, they know they may be reassigned to another post or base before they finish a degree here. In addition, active-duty soldiers can't even count on a set schedule. So for instance, the 101st Airborne Division Headquarters stationed at Fort Campbell will deploy to Afghanistan in about three weeks. I think that's what I heard yesterday, sometime this spring. They're already ramping up their training activities to prepare for the fight they'll have to wage in just a few weeks. So regardless of whether they have a long-term assignment at Fort Campbell or whether or not they'll be deployed, all of them have to deal with federal, state, and university regulations that don't always complement one another and certainly don't consider processes and timeframes that align for the convenience of military students. And our large veteran population means that some students have had multiple deployments, which has increased the incidence of post-traumatic stress disorder resulting in more students needing help. So the three challenges I've mentioned are all barriers to our ultimate goal, which is to provide a quality education to our students and to help them graduate. So while we're on pace to meet or exceed our drive to 55 goals, exceeding annual goals an average of 14% each of the last three years, we won't be satisfied if we just meet those goals. We've got to get more students across the finish line. So what are we doing to address those challenges? We're working to be more efficient. I told you we were lean, but we're really trying to be efficient with our processes and we're building processes. And that is not fun. It's all under the hood, so to speak. So you won't see somebody coming in to share something so exciting as we got here today. But we are trying to improve our processes so that we can be more efficient. Several divisions have reorganized before filling vacant positions to increase their effectiveness and efficiencies. Two recent examples were the reorganization of Information Technology and the Business Affairs Office. Judy Molnar is here with IT, our CIO, and she led that for IT. And then of course, Vice President Robinson is overseeing that area as well, is the Business Office. There's been some reorganization in Academic Affairs as well. There's continual reorganization in Advancement, Communication, and Strategic Initiatives. But my point is, we don't just open a slot, fill a slot. They're really looking at ways we can reorganize if it would be beneficial to the university. We're also working to improve our retention and graduation rates. Doing better in these metrics will lessen a student's time to degree. And that has a huge impact on how much money they owe when they leave. Because many of them borrow continually the whole time they're in school. Now they have a ceiling of how much they can borrow, but they continue to accrue debt. And in some cases, our students come from such poor backgrounds that they borrow the maximum amount and they send some of it home to help their parents pay their bills. And then that student is saddled with that financial debt for years after graduation. So we need to help those students get in and we need to help them get out. Another payoff is if we improve our retention and graduation rates, the university will do better in the state's funding formula and that will increase our state appropriation. We've partnered with John Gardner's Institute of Excellence in undergraduate programs to improve student retention. Next fall, we'll offer several learning communities for first-year students. That means that students in the same major will be put in some of the same classes so that they build friendships and relationships and can study together and get support, build them that network so that they don't come in and crash and burn early. That model has been successful elsewhere. Academic Affairs folks are looking at ways to improve the advising process and ways to encourage and incentivize students to take at least 30 semester credit hours a year to keep them on track to graduate in four years. A steering committee is considering more than 60 recommendations from the campus community to promote student success. This is a partnership between the Divisions of Student Affairs and Academic Affairs, but I would tell you that everybody on campus, regardless of position, is interested in helping our students graduate. So, we are committed to helping students. We're committed to pulling in faculty who have an understanding of the teaching mission, which is really critical. But we also recognize the importance of research on campus. And the university has renewed its efforts to grow grants and contracts. Now not every field is going to be, not every discipline is in a spot that people are going to give them money to do research. I'm really sorry for those who are teaching in some of the areas where there is no external funding, but that's just a reality. But in the sciences in particular, in some of the social sciences, nursing and healthcare, there are grant dollars to help faculty work with students. We have a strong undergraduate research program as well. Our faculty work with students to do research and then there's a financial blessing in it as well. So not only do the grants help the faculty do their research, many times there's some overhead that comes with that, that the university charges to help fund the research. And that's another way to increase revenue to the institution. And of course, the other contracts, you can see that in your list of interim items, some of the contracts are people paying us for services that we provide. And so you'll also see contracts that deal with auxiliary services that have to generate revenue to operate their own departments. So we're also, as you heard from Derek, getting ready to start a comprehensive campaign. I've been very, very happy with the direction that Vice President Vandermeer has taken the Office of Advancement and Alumni and Strategic Initiatives. And one of the things that we have to do is grow our endowment. So when I got here a few years ago, I think our endowment was 29, 28, 29 million. Right now, it's about 34 million. I'm not going to sleep a whole lot till we get to 60 million. A university our size should have an endowment of about 60 million. And we need a comprehensive campaign and we need to increase our efforts in philanthropy and share the need and the vision with those who see the value of education, not just for their own children or their own family members, but they understand what it does in a community. They understand what it does in a generation, frankly. So, we are going to increase private gifts to help us improve the students' educational experience and to support some of our capital needs. And I want to say one more thing about the grants and contracts. I said that we had renewed efforts in that case. Those efforts are going really well. We're up a half million so far this year. I had to ask Interim Dean Brooks to give me an update again on where we were. We're up a half million this year from last year and we have another three or four months to go in the fiscal year. And then we're up more than a million and a half from 2016. So the faculty are working really hard to grow in that area. In terms of the mental health challenge, we added a counselor to our health clinic a couple of years ago, but frankly, that was just a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage. That is not enough. And we don't have the resources that we need in that area. Dr. Rutter, Director of the Clinic, and his team have initiated prevention programs and they're embedding some counselors and aides across campus. Like you would have an IT booth, we have a help desk. They're putting tables out, inviting people to sit down and talk to them. So they're trying to catch students where they are, to show them some ways to deal with life. Life is stressful and some of our opportunities are to help students navigate and learn how to deal with stress, learn how to deal with failure, learn how to deal with rejection and breakup. We are a learning, a place of learning here, but it's far more than what you would just learn in an academic discipline. And so I'm really pleased with their prevention efforts and I think they're going to make a difference. But we don't have a solution at this point to the mental health challenges. That is a national problem. And we are talking with Commissioner of Tennessee Department of Mental Health to explore options. Commissioner Williams is an Austin Peay alum and has met with Dr. Rutter and Dr. Bird. And I'm just going to tell you, we're not going to stop until we figure out how to help our students because we care about them. And finally, I appointed a task force several months ago to look at how we can better serve our military students. I know how we feel about them. Many of our staff members and our faculty are veterans. Some are still connected, still connected in reserves. And I know that our intentions are good, but sometimes we put up barriers that we don't even know are there. And so I ask a task force to look at how we can better serve them and that task force will present recommendations at university budget hearings in the next few days. And the leadership team will consider those in light of our budget and the impact that would be possible. And when I gave members of the task force their charge, I asked them to be a barrier removal committee. I want them to be, I want them to be like President Reagan saying, "Tear down the wall." Just go, you know, if it's something, if it's a barrier that we put up, we can take it down. Now I have to say, we're a university. Some of those barriers will come down with gnashing of teeth, but they will come down. They will come down. Now there are other barriers that we didn't put up. There are barriers that are imposed by the Veterans Administration, federal government, state government. And if that's the case, if we don't have control over that barrier, a couple of things we can do is one, we can call on our generals to help us to see if there's a way under, a way over, somebody we can talk to, somebody we can advocate with, and so we can make the point. Because I think everybody wants the same thing. Everybody in DC, everybody in the nation. I can't believe anybody who wouldn't want our military-connected students to get through. And so we're going to continue to ways, to look for ways to help them overcome the challenges that they have that would keep them from finishing. So these are a few things we're doing to make headway on the issues. And I bring them to you not to discourage you, but to let you know that just as your businesses are very complicated, the life of a university is very complex and deals with a lot of regulation and a lot of things that are not easy to control. But I invite you into the conversation and I wanted to just tell you that what we're facing is the same as other universities in the state and in the nation. And just to give you an opportunity to talk about it and to ask questions that you might have. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. White, for your thoughtful and very informative insights into what's going on at the university right now. You know, it strikes me that we start the meeting talking about a lot of our successes, certainly athletically, and they've been significant. And it's also good to know that we have some sobering things to work on and challenges. So thank you for updating us on what those are. I'd also like to thank trustee General Luck, Dr. Luck, General Luck, trustee Luck, and Arisolt.
Chet Norris.
And Dr. Christine Nakoudas for a terrific day that we spent yesterday at Fort Campbell and Dr. Nakoudas' staff. It's not lost on me that a lot of work went into making that happen yesterday. So thank you all very much. It was a really, really good day. So thanks. Our next regularly scheduled meeting, is it important, do I say regularly scheduled? Is there something else that might happen? Is June 7th and 8th, 2018. And I move that we, that we move for an adjournment after really the most important thing that I want to say, and that is to salute the outgoing student trustee, Crystal Wallinious. You have represented yourself extremely well in the year that you've been a student trustee. You've represented yourself not only with distinction, but also the student body. And you are an important member of this inaugural Board of Trustees. So thank you for all your contributions. Good luck as you move to Utah in the next chapter of your academic life and congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you to, I'm an emotional person, so I'm going to make this quick. Thank you to all of you, the civilian side, like thank you for all of you, such like successful and professional individuals. It's been so rewarding to serve on this board. But also military side, like working with generals is something as a lower-enlisted soldier you don't really get to do. So in this atmosphere, it's just amazing to work with you guys. And then to President White, thank you. The student body loves you. You're just so comforting to us and so nurturing. And so you have like that professional side, but also, you know, the mother side. And so you're just a really big part of like how we've gotten through the four years of our lives. So thank you so much.
Oh, nice.
You just remember you're going to be so successful if you're a fire all this well.
Thank you, Christine.
And as our last, our last function today, I'd like to pass the gavel to Christine, or to Crystal, I'm sorry, Christine, to Crystal and let her officially gavel us adjourned. You do whatever you want. You have the gavel.
Do we like second it?
If you want us to.